Now, we can go up to twelve because back to the button. You're out of here. And I'm like, oh. But still got the other three left. Well, somewhat in the context of, I mean, everything is there. Yeah.
He was elementary principal at Central.
So he's not proud of him, of course. Anytime you get an appeal system.
You don't need to tell him.
Yeah.
We heard anything about our own? That's what I was saying. I'll let you all hear.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay. That's what I was asking about. Have you heard any more than that or no?
They sent the injector pump off and then they got it back being right away at blood pumping deal, right? So we sent it back to the rock.
At least they're gonna hopefully get it right.
And the injector pump guy said they didn't got enough juice. They might have had enough back because they haven't got one battery on.
That probably is smart. We got one.
One big dog or battery on. See, Trump three's got two of them.
They need two of them to be honest with you.
It's smart. Well, that's what it's gonna do. Put it back on it, put more batteries to it. Let's start looking at nine, ten, nine, three.
One.
Or let you charge it and you can work the both sides.
Oh, to the.
Wow.
They're not allowed to get that too. I'm just thirsty.
Probably not. Oh, dude?
Right.
Is it a lot of money?
No, I didn't know that.
Is it a lot of two or?
They told me that there was gonna be some kind of charge for it, but I didn't know. They didn't give any information than it was.
That's what I figured when it didn't work, I figured it was charged.
Yeah. Um, no, I wonder if John's pointing.
Ordered that charger.
Well, I haven't got John to sign. Did you get it back today?
Well, yeah, I would have done it probably.
Oh, okay.
Four is just a single.
Um.
I went ahead and ordered it because the charger was good.
I canceled all my.
And drove three.
Calls on Wednesday, Thursday, last week, so I kinda shouldn't do it again this week.
Right. And then some of those.
We go. No, we're not both of them.
Do you have a moment? Not this, uh, just. They had a lot of questions, but they'll throw this one off. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But he must have been somewhat intrigued though because he actually could be told me about it.
Yeah, they don't talk for no money.
Yeah. Yeah. I would say it's. I don't, I don't know. I'm not gonna be. I mean, I would love for him to come, but I don't really.
The low wasn't coming to that. That's true.
It's kind of alive. I feel like you rather.
I already love.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's so close. I.
You point to what stage it's. He took it all. So I've got it.
What about the students? Well, yeah, I mean, the students. Other students. They get around the middle, the whole last week. When they're done and the kids.
Well, I know they already have graduation at some point, so.
Yeah. Well, let's see here.
I hope, I hope it was twenty percent.
They did that.
And I don't.
Friday.
I know he hasn't got a home for the.
They all did, they all got.
Oh, my goodness. Well, she got a little. No, I just. What is it? You won't hurt guys. When are bad?
I think it's. So I was.
We get one of their.
How about that? We did, we go. Saw pictures, whatever thing most per cent of the. It was supposed to be, right? I haven't seen that, so I don't know. I just, but I saw some pictures, something like. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, wow. She does a lot. I know it's not always.
Is that fucking fragrant that's open like the water has it?
Oh, no, it's what I was asking. Well, I've never heard of it.
And he and his brother were in Colonel's cemetery road yesterday.
He was filling his water tank up. That big water tank in the trailer.
Do you know who he is now?
I said something there with the tower. I believe what I said. They were supposed to be. Say it all tomorrow.
It's been a tale all day. I'm sorry, it's been.
All right. And I'm down board. They want to be up there. Like, the press every time this company is thinking, just want to die and all the blessings for you. Over this, as you continue blessing this town, blessing this administration, Lord. Keep guiding and directing. Open wise decisions for you, Lord. Just give them that knowledge. Just as people with us during this meeting. This mighty decision is pleasing you, you expect Jesus and God.
I thank the Lord Jesus, who is the flag of the United States of America. In this very public, for which the sentence war on nation under God, if the individual delivered the investment.
Okay. Did everybody receive the minutes? Had a chance to review?
My question is.
Second.
All right. Does everybody have a chance to review the files? How you doing, Mary? How you doing? All right. Can I give you a motion? Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Bobby, would you our place report?
Okay, for April twenty twenty five, we had eighty six contacts, two extra patrols, no incident reports, served three misdemeanor warrants, no felony warrants, and had no dog complaints this month, and made no arrests. On some of the talking points is CICO has finally came into effect and they're starting cleaning up. And so hopefully they'll let their store open within a month if they're, they're not completely. You do it from the. Austin stuff. Man Archer had about forty extra hours this last month to do with the storms and floods. Everything's went on. And then on top of that, the cleanup letters we sent out last month, I think there's like twelve of them. Like two of them come back. I find owners abandoned. Everybody's cooler and compliance, they started cleaning up and everything. It's all good, pretty good so far.
You have. Any questions?
Thanks, sir.
Oy, Mr. Wales, your agenda.
Would you like me to go first or would you rather I go first?
It don't matter. Go ahead and you go first.
Council care if I bring a chair.
Yeah, I've got the one, right?
I'll begin just by saying that I've asked to have some time tonight at this city council meeting to address some concerns and some issues that we have. There are lease agreements with the city for the building Upper Street hosted. Rented at the moment by the Illinois Charter School. And I, I felt perhaps it was necessary to provide everyone in this room with a little bit of a history lesson on how this came to be to begin with. I'm gonna go through this as quickly as I can. I realize everyone has outside things that they need to be doing, but. Nonetheless, Mayor Wilson had approached my school board with his original offer in March of twenty twenty three. The offer included the old high school building, the white building that used to host the library, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, baseball fields, and the promise of areas to construct some outdoor playgrounds. The offer included all of these facilities and utilities paid for a rent of five thousand dollars per month. It was also suggested at this time by Mayor Wilson that he had numerous families in Blackrock ready to enroll their children and that an enrollment of ninety students would be like. It was also ensured that the building was compliant with all the necessary items for a public school. Therefore, I went through the process of getting the move approved with the Department of Education in Little Rock. Explained the situation to our previous landlord in Illinois. Once the move was approved by the Department of Ed, there was no turning back. The move had to happen. In July of twenty twenty three, my staff began moving everything from my old facility to Blackrock. We began to plan out where things would go and how it would be organized. At this time, Mayor Wilson altered the offer we received and essentially cut off a third of the building we were planning to rent. It was my feeling, opinion only here, that Mayor Wilson caught a great deal of backlash for the Blackrock Historical Society and altered the agreement he and I had in order to appease the ladies of the Historical Society. Again, I had already gotten the move approved. There was no going back. So I was forced to deal with getting less than what I was promised. A wall was constructed to cut off my rented property from the Historical Society, who were less than friendly about the situation. August the twenty twenty three came. All the families Mayor Wilson had suggested would enroll their children did not. Any students that I was able to, to enroll came from my own advertising and our own reputation. The city, in my opinion, made no effort whatsoever to help the school to gain enrollments. Only recently has the mayor offered a space for signs to be put up to advertise the school along the highway, yet has not yet met with any staff to indicate a definitive place for the signs to be installed. Over time, Mayor Wilson was able to move the Historical Society to another area in town and provide us with the full building that was originally offered to us. However, the rent was also increased from five thousand dollars to six thousand dollars. Every summer, the school has to submit a number of building inspections to the Department of Ed in order to receive funding. In June twenty twenty four, I was working through these inspections when a number of problems came up that needed the city's immediate attention. First and foremost, the building did not have a fire alarm system of any kind. I had had children in this building for a year without a working fire alarm. How the building had passed any fire inspections is beyond my understanding. Nonetheless, I contacted Mayor Wilson about this matter and was told it would be addressed. Several weeks went by, nothing changed. Then I had the state fire inspector come. And he explained to me very clearly that if the fire alarm system was not installed in short order, he would be forced to shut this thing down. At this point, I had no choice but to make arrangements with the company and get a fire alarm installed. Mayor Wilson had told me that the city would work on getting a grant to cover the expenses. It's been almost a year now. And the thirteen thousand dollars that the school had spent in order to get the fire alarm installed has never been reimbursed. Nor has there been any effort made to adjust our rent to reflect the costs. Now, while the school did pay for this system, it's attached to a building owned by the city and essentially is going to be city private. We've never been reimbursed. Again, with the inspections, it's required every year that the school submit records of asbestos testing. I've asked the city for these records and they've never received it. It's my belief personally that there's never been any asbestos testing done. And this again is going to fall on the school's finances if we wish to remain open. If I don't get asbestos records before June fifteenth, something's gotta be done. I've also asked the city to provide me with copies of the monthly utility bills. I asked for this in order to code our monthly rent payments correctly into a financial system. By law, I am only allowed to code a certain amount to rent. Everything else has to be coded out to the different utilities. I can't do this because the city will not provide me with the documents either. I received one month of bills back in the winter of twenty twenty three and never again. Also, the city rents out the facilities to all kinds of groups for different events. The school is never notified of these events and has, has had to rearrange school events in order to accommodate the city's rentals. The school has had people from rental events steal school lunch items, damage bathroom areas, and leave areas filthy following events. My staff has had to come in and clean the cafeteria and gym numerous times after the city has had weekend rentals. Wrestling was held on April fifth in the gym up there. No one from the city showed up until April seventeenth to do a cleanup. The school has had to install locking mechanisms on almost every door in the cafeteria in order to keep people out of areas that contain sensitive documents and school property. I went through today and did a bit of a survey of the facilities. I'm gonna break it down by room and just kind of explain what I see. The office room, only six out of the eight light fixtures work. There's multiple damaged ceiling tiles from leaks. We have wiring hanging from the ceiling. The HVAC system in there is not covered at the ceiling. There's wiring, duct work, all kinds of stuff exposed. In my office, there are still numerous Blackrock High School graduation photos sitting on there. My library, only six out of the eight light fixtures work. The teacher workroom next to the library, two of the four light fixtures work. There's several areas in there that the state fire inspector was concerned about because of the exposed wiring. Multiple ceiling tiles in there that are damaged from leaks. I mean, this continues. I mean, light fixtures that do not work in half of the building. Ceiling tiles are damaged everywhere from leaks. The restroom's over there. The boys restroom, only one of three urinals work. The one that does work leaks constantly. We're in there mopping it up at least once a week. One of the toilets in the boys restroom is not even attached to the floor and obviously does not work. Half light fixtures in the girls restroom don't work. The white building outside, the HVAC, HVAC system does not work in ages.
Okay, so we're well over ten minutes. But anyhow, as you keep going on about the things that are broke, light fixtures, simple things like that was discussed at the beginning, you have to have a maintenance man. You gotta have a janitor. We can't provide you with a, a maintenance man, a oil fairy, and, and cleaning up when a kid flushes two rolls of toilet paper and overflows the toilet. I mean, there's, there's certain things. The school never lifted a finger the whole first year to do any simple maintenance. There's a lot of this that could have been kept up as it was done, as it was broke. Whenever the school calls about an HVAC system, I call the guy, get him up there right then. I mean, somebody says something's broke that we can fix, I call and get it done right then. So ninety percent of what you've complained about is the school's fault for not taking care of it. Now, what, I, I go back from the beginning of your. Whatever. And we sit here and talk about.
Slide. I, I assume you're cutting like I won't. Is that?
No.
What, what, what the buzzer's about?
No, I'm, we still talk. I'm just telling you right now, though, everything you've addressed in there, more than half of it is y'all's responsibility.
When was the fire inspection stuff being, you know, the fires and all that stuff?
That was in June of twenty twenty four.
Now, had you ever inspected the building before y'all ever moved in? You said last time.
This is twenty twenty five. I mean, something should have been said to us way before now.
You know, if you want my thirty four, come get them up thirty four. Well, I didn't know you wanted to know every seventy years a month. I do remember you asking more time for it. I tried, I've been on the backwards to work with you.
Okay. Excuse me.
Think I donated two hundred dollars on this last go around for the advertisement. As far as them coming, put a spot on the front of my property for a sign, I told them find a spot, pick any spot they want, the best looking spot, and they had it. I should have to go back and meet with them again to pick them a spot. If you wanna, if you wanna hand me a list of stuff that we can, we can work on getting them fixed, we'll work on it and I'll, I'll get, we'll get it fixed.
What about the fire?
What do you want?
I have no kids in the building because nobody knows who lives.
I agree there's been no left because of them. The postcard, that was my idea.
Yeah. Because the ones that I sent out six years ago wasn't my idea.
I don't know what you did six years ago. You weren't here six years ago.
Well, I was with the school.
Okay.
And I've been with it for twenty years. And I know why I'm getting the reaction that I'm getting right now. I know that we really know the circuitry. You know that I need you. And that whatever I have to say right here, right now, is going to turn back around me. I need, I need that walking. The fact of the matter is, you are charging a premium price for a building that is falling apart. I have notes from a person sitting on your city council complaining about things inability that do not work.
Have you asked to negotiate for rent? Have you tried a premium price?
That's what I'm doing right here, right now. Try, the outcomes that I have.
So what are you requesting? Are you requesting a rent reduction?
Rent reduction and reimbursement for the fire alarm system. That was the outcomes that I was hoping to. Because here's the deal. With as few kids as I've been able to acquire, next year's funding is going to be the next. And at some point, you're gonna be trying to squeeze water out of the turd. And whatever money that you are making off of this rent agreement is going to be gone because it's not gonna be the school. I don't know what you were making off of the Historical Society being down there, but I venture a guess at saying it's nowhere near the six thousand dollars that I need.
No, it was. That was the purpose of bringing the school in.
Yeah. And, you know. It's. I, I'm gonna be silly.
Oh, I know. I know. And if he would have gotten the financials, he would know that. Doesn't below a thousand dollar account right now. And that's because every dime is spent on that facility. Broken glass, broken doors. Gas bills, water bills, everything, all of it, energy. The, the contract that they're working on stuff.
We, we're quite satisfied. I apologize by talking to other people. But trying to be so kind of unreasonable, so much to do about this. Is there a way?
Yeah.
And you should do this.
I hadn't, I hadn't thought about it. I just want to start talking about, that's why I asked you earlier, it's not.
I'm glad you're late, Steve.
Play your voice. How about?
Do you have a copy of the search?
I don't have it.
And say that's what I don't, and that's why I ask to be prepared. Oh, yeah, I mean, that's what, to accuse the city of not trying to help, if you look at this month's water bills, Emboden Charter School, open house, I mean, we've got y'all's open house on there. The city helps every time we turn around.
Well, I mean, just to be honest on the red perspective of that, you know, every time you guys read it out to somebody, you're using our toilet paper, our paper towels, our soap, all of our supplies, and, you know, it's kind of a vice versa, you know? I don't feel as it should be my responsibility to cover those essential items for people who are wrecked and so are the children.
Did we not start swapping that out?
I actually communicated that until probably the last.
So I mean, that's supposed to be swapping everything out, only it should be, but I mean, I'm just.
Well.
To try to cover it.
Again, Zaid, please, if we could BS the way all of this, again, I'm sorry, it's coming in here, but I just wanna reach a reasonable solution that helps the city, but at the same time keeps my school going. Whether I'm here or not, I don't want to see this school there. I'm stepping away for my own personal reasons. My help is not there. My mother needs my help and I can't do anything.
I understand.
But someone coming in there is going to need help to get the expenses cut.
I understand.
There's a way to figure that, you know, using the solution, that's what I need.
One of the things we talked about right up front, you know, the initial impact of revitalizing the building, we do up front, there's old HVAC systems. I've got two orders right now and the cost on it is $12,000 and I've got a parent's plan set up with HVAC.
You know, I mean, everything is solely based on how I know and I know that the city is part of one of these.
Oh, yeah.
And you've got lawyers back and you're specialized in, you know, that, and so we're going to see if that can prove this much. And, you know, it's not that I'm not thankful for that. I'm just, I need some room.
I looked at maybe, you know, try to reduce the rent back down to what it was before y'all took over the whole building, which was all in that initial contract too, a portion of the building, not the whole building. And then we, y'all went to the whole building, which is fine. I'm glad y'all got the whole building. But we went to the $6,000 versus the $5,000. And right now, these are just y'all's bills and we have $1,600 in that.
Well, what could we do as a staff to try to help cut that?
Make sure our lots are not where they live at.
You know, I try to do the best I can, but I'm not there a hundred percent of the time, so I, obviously cutting that off, what are, what are we doing with water? I mean, what do your bills look like with that?
Okay.
Okay. Cause there are some leaks and things.
And when the software teams have the not software, I've been making the fucking payment pay half of that, make the trip.
Well, I was just thinking of the water because I know there's some leaks and that's gotta be costly to run that all the time. But if the bulk of the cost is in like electricity and natural gas, I would say.
And a lot of utilities, or not utilities, like the HVAC, we're on a struggle bus because it's old systems and slowly getting, I haven't put Band-Aids on them after Band-Aids, but now we're trying to get brand new systems. So I've got two brand new ones ordered and they should be here anytime. The second Miss Lisa texts me, I forward the message, screenshot it, forward it to them.
You've always been great. I'm just, I know where the school is at, but you are, I know where the children are.
Well, in the last entertainment committee meeting, I was here for it and that's what I, I've kind of, kind of the ideals for that. I know a guy that with radio stations and trying to get radio ads out there.
I just did one of the, I'm trying to help me along. And I've got that mail out there going, so I'm hopeful that, you know, they can draw it on for next year.
And when I do my ads, you know, kind of for the kids, the different things they've done up there, I advertise our school concept.
I appreciate it.
It's not like, you know, I tell them, cause.
Well.
You put it out there.
And I'm gonna apologize again for that, but I'll be honest, there were a couple of people that were here that left the back to this, but I've not, I've not gotten that out yet. The historical society ladies were less than pleasant in, you know, one lady in particular really got to move it forward.
But we got that all squashed and that's out of the way, so I'm now moving forward. As far as budget wise, if rent breaks some bills down first and I'd be the first one to say, hey, let's drop rent back down, but we're on a struggle bus, which haven't we seen? I think we're a little behind on rent, but that might help too. But if we're right there at that margin, we're, it's at zero balance, then I'd be fairly as good as proposing we drop it back down to $5,000.
So what can I take out of here and share with my school board and possibly my office to, you know, do your best to cut monthly bills?
If we can do that, then I would make a proposal that as we see an increase in the numbers, I wouldn't care to ask everybody to reimburse for the fire alarms. I mean, that'll be their decision, but we've gotta have funding too.
I appreciate it. I'm pretty happy the county's going out.
Exactly.
I don't have it. City don't have it. What, what could any of my staff or my board members do to help possibly get some grants to help with this?
I don't know a whole lot about the grants, but I, you know, I was told, LARNES Act has got all kinds of grants out there for charter schools, for all of them. But I don't have, I don't know what those grants are.
Here's the problem, is that the ministry doesn't have very specific areas that are tailored specifically to like dyslexia or special ed. That, while it's helpful, it doesn't really fix the problem that we have with operating costs. And, you know, I consider all of this operating costs and that's where the fine math is coming from and you don't really get that funding most likely.
Oh, absolutely. Obviously, it's like, it's another business.
You don't have customers, you don't have business.
But I mean, but don't think we're not trying to help. I mean, we, we're trying every, every quarter time.
You know, if I can leave here with some kind of thought that we're all going to work together to get the monthly bills down and that's a, keep the rent back to $5,000, I think that comfort me, you know, to be there and taking that back to my overseers, um, to report.
Okay. So, you know, if you can get a list together of all the repairs that need to be made too, but, you know, ask, tell him, I know she gets the budgets, I mean, every, it'll help. If you owe them every month, they can email and tell you. And we see these numbers go up, we can try to work on bringing all the different ones back down. So that's about the best I can, I can offer to them.
I understand that I'm a kid, I give the fact that you're all in a struggle bus. Unfortunately, I don't think things are going to improve for a while. Between state and federal government, I think we're, you know, I mentioned, striving for a while.
Understand. Y'all's more welcome to the financials and like, we've got, we've got to have enough to pay the bills for it.
Sure.
And if you ever see a, you know, a really significant amount in there at all, then we can start decreasing as we go.
One of the things that I do have to talk about is asbestos. And I'm hopeful that maybe the city has records on it somewhere.
I don't know, I asked the school, what rich school, you know, they have zero records on it. And I don't know if we've ever had a test rate table. The school, the school building, so I mean, we've never had a reason to test it.
We don't have to.
Yeah, we, we hired one down here for the service system, there's a guy that'll do it, but.
Do you actually remember what the cost for that was?
I think that was like $800 to do that for testing on service system.
And, I mean, as long as it's not something like $1,000.
No, it's, it's under a thousand.
I can find a way to deal with that, but I'm just trying to think ahead, you know, cause I have to have all of those facilities inspections sent in by the 15th of June. So, if you're, if you're quite sure that we don't have any records in the past for asbestos, then if you appear forward with opposing, and I'll try and make arrangements with any As far as the monthly bills, I know you had said you had the financial statements, but it would make it a lot easier for us to code and be keeping with if we just had a copy of the bill. So can I just come down and?
Yep. Yeah. You have anything else?
I might tell you the side of the law reveals.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Misunderstanding there. I'll come right down and give you everything. Anybody else with mic in the audience, do you have anything to say?
You speak for us.
Thanks, sir.
I'm new to this. Can I suggest something real quick? Am I allowed to talk or not?
Yeah, go ahead. We got.
Can y'all not have a special meeting between him and his board, his replacement, you know, hash out police agreement and find out and make sure everybody's on a complete understanding and there is no hearsay and all that and we've got a complete understanding of that?
We have to come up to the agreement.
Cause I mean, that's what is, so that, what I took in the conversation is that kinda is the issue. Protect him, I don't know you, I'm sorry, sir, and protect him and it protects you.
To cover everything, it would be best to just do a special meeting and that would be the only topic of the whole meeting.
Is that a way, I don't know nothing about it, but your replacement's on board, your school board's on board, they know.
I think that would probably be, you know, that way we're not in this situation and we got everything clear and.
Have your attorney with you and all that and y'all just discuss it and.
Y'all still calling for the citizens to be able to be a part of it too since, okay.
It'd be a special customer.
That's what I wanna make sure of.
It's still be helping the public.
Good.
All right, thanks, sir.
Also, do you guys have any social media? Do y'all have Facebook and all that? Okay, like I said, I don't head around much on that. I don't have any kids.
We just don't have the money to start reimbursing that now.
No, I understand. If that's the story that's in the head about what going forward.
We don't have a plan going forward until we, until we have funds.
And the, and the school's paying for the asbestos testing?
Right now.
Has it?
On your social media, do y'all put your clips that y'all have on there?
It's not that close. I'm just saying for any questions that have all hundred percent.
If you guys end up doing a paid advertisement, I'll be willing to donate a couple hundred towards the company, run a few months of advertising, so just let me know.
I'd like to get some dollars to more.
Yeah, if you guys reach out, I'd be more than willing to help donate. Branch and Gray, yeah. So I wanna see the city improve and all that, it's awesome when you have some kind of school back in. And if there's anything to have that, reach out to me.
All right, appreciate you. All right. Moving on to ordinance. Ordinance 428-2025.
We'll get to 27 first.
Oh, yep, it was off by that 427.
I think I put this down.
Yeah, that was the mixer. 427.
Ordinance number 427-2025, an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of the land street from Block C of Kaufman's addition to the city of Black Rock, Arkansas and for other purposes. Whereas, a petition was duly filed with the city council of the city of Black Rock, Arkansas on, that would be April 21st. Asking the city council to vacate and abandon all of that portion of the street designated on the plant of Kaufman's addition to the city now appearing of record in plaque book.
Please outside, Mr. Williams.
Okay. And we have the plaque book page in the office of the recorder in Lawrence County, Arkansas, beginning at and ending at. Whereas, after due notice, as required by the law, the city council has at a time and place mentioned in the notice heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question and has ascertained that the street or the portion thereof herein therefore described has heretofore been dedicated to the public use as a street herein described has not been actually used by the public generally for a period of not less than five years such as to follow the Act. That all the owners of the property abutting upon the portion of the street to be vacated have filled with council, the written consent to the abandonment and that public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the abandonment of the street. Now therefore made ordained by the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas, Section 1, the city of Black Rock, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates and abandons all its rights together with the rights of the public generally and to the street designated as follows. That portion of the land, street, lane between Block 3 and Block 4, of Block C of Kaufman's addition to the city of Black Rock, Arkansas. Section 2, a copy of the recorded plaque depicting the portion of the land street as attached tier 2 as exhibit A and non-incorporated and incorporated herein by record. Section 3, a copy of the ordinance duly certified by the city clerk of town and courtship to be filed in the office of the reporter of Lawrence County, Arkansas and recorded in the D records of Lawrence County, Arkansas. Section 4, ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Fast and impeded this. Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna get a motion to wipe, second, third, and. I'm gonna get a motion to pass the mercy clause.
Make such a motion.
All in favor? Can I get a vote on that ordinance?
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor? Your fourth debate?
Yeah. Why not? Ordinance number four two eight two oh two five, an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of Front Street and block one of Cuthbert's addition to the city of Black Rock, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas, a petition was duly filed with the city council of the city of Black Rock, Arkansas, on the twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty five. Asking the city council to vacate and abandon all of that portion of the street designated on the plant of the Cuthbert's addition to the city now appearing in the record in the plant book page in the office of the reporter of Lawrence County, Arkansas, beginning at Indian Hill. Whereas, due notice has, due notice has, as required by law, the city council has at a time and place mentioned in notice heard all the persons designed to be heard on the question, and has ascertained that the street of the portion thereof herein before described as herein before, herein two forth, been dedicated to the public use as a street herein described has not actually been used by the public generally for a period of not less than five years. Subsequent to the filing of this plant, all the owners and of the property abiding any proportion of the street to be vacated have filed with the council, the written consent to abandonment, and the public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the abandonment of the street. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas. Section one, the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas, hereby releases, vacates, abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally in, and to the street designated as follows. That portion of Front Street lying between block four and block five of block one of Cuthbert's addition to the city of Black Rock, Arkansas. Section two, a copy of the reported plant depicted, this portion of Front Street is attached tier two as exhibit A, and incorporated herein by records. Section three, the document duly certified by the city clerk of town reporter shall be filed in the office of the reporter of Lawrence County, Arkansas, and recorded in the deed records of Lawrence County, Arkansas. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and fast and improved this fifth day, May twenty twenty five.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments, any interest in the properties? All in favor?
I don't think so. Emergency clause.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make it up, just make a motion, and you say.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Who's second in the way? Jessica.
Yeah, all right.
Who seconded the emergency?
For these people building these new houses, there's a portion of the end that is better suitable for them to make a driveway. Need to move all of them.
I want who's second.
Jessica.
Anyways, there's a piece of that that's more suitable down the hill for them to get to their houses, and I'm gonna donate that property to the city, so I can use that for a road, if everyone's being agreeance with it or accept it. We'll have that come in our next one. All right, last one, ordinance annexing a portion of Indian Hills.
I'm not waiting on you.
Megan, you're not waiting on me?
She's a gatekeeper.
Of course you're not waiting on me.
Oh, I gotta retalk?
All right.
Okay, ordinance confirming annexation of certain lands to Black Rock, Arkansas, number four thirty twenty twenty five. Whereas, on April sixteen twenty twenty five, a petition for annexation of certain lands contiguous to Black Rock, Arkansas, was filed to annex certain lands described as follows. All of lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, portion four, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven of the Indian Hills subdivision, Lawrence County, situated in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, and northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty. Township seventeen north, range one west, and recorded in book forty-nine, page four thirty-three of the Lawrence County ex officio reporter, and all of Lawrence County road two ninety-six, and adjoining right-of-way, which adjoins lots forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four of said Indian Hills subdivision. Whereas, a hearing was held in the county court of Lawrence County, Arkansas, April sixteen twenty twenty five, wherefrom said court entered an order allowing the annexation into proceedings prayed for in the said petition for annexation. And whereas, the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas, believes it is right and proper that the order of annexation entered by the county court of Lawrence County, Arkansas, be confirmed and accepted by the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of Black Rock, Arkansas, as follows. That the order of annexation entered by the Lawrence County court on April sixteen twenty twenty five be and the same is hereby in all respects confirmed, and the property annexed by the said county court is hereby approved, confirmed, and accepted by the city of Black Rock, Arkansas, to become a part of the corporate limits of Black Rock, Arkansas. That an emergency is hereby declared to exist in, that it is imperative and necessary that city services be provided to the annexed territory, and further, that because of this emergency, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage. Date this the fifth day of May twenty twenty five.
All right. Anybody have any questions, conservatives, comments?
Where's Indian Hills?
County road two ninety-six under the bridge.
Turtle Road.
Turtle Road, Turtle Hills.
That really don't tell me anything.
Go under the bridge, like you hit the...
First ride out of the bridge.
First road, right.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Can I get a motion to waive, second, third?
Yep.
All in favor? Emergency clause?
The motion.
Wait, you don't say it.
All in favor? I'll phone that for you.
Yeah, for you.
All right, don't go on.
Second.
Thank y'all. Yeah, all right. That's the end of all I have, anybody else have anything?
No.
They just want to add something.
Huh?
They want to add something.
On the ordinance, y'all, I'll have another one, we'll be ready for the next one. Gotta get with the other one quick, we gotta have a resolution for me to donate it, I'll have to donate to the city already.
Yeah, there'll need to be an ordinance accepting.
A resolution or ordinance?
It's an ordinance, done, but, um, yeah, we'll have to...
I just want to make sure we look, just give an oath.
Yeah. All right, anybody over here? All good? All right, maybe a motion to grab? Thank you, have a good night.